All right, if I can ask everybody to please rise and welcome the Honorable Judge Kevin Shanahan.
Good afternoon, everyone. Please have a seat.
There's a noise in here.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Shanahan. I'm the assignment judge here in Somerset County. And on behalf of all the judiciary, our judges and staff, I want to welcome you here to our historic courtroom for this happy occasion. As I look around, boy, there's too many people to mention, but I do want to express particular welcome to Governor Murphy, to Congressman Mickey Sherrill, to Assemblywoman Linda Carter. And with that, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our county clerk, Steve Peter.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, distinguished guests, disgruntled employees, welcome to the 2024 Reorganization Meeting of Somerset County Government. I'm going to ask everybody now to please make sure that your cell phones are in silent mode, because inevitably they will ring right in the middle of the oath. And with that, I would ask you to rise for the presentation of the colors by the Somerset County Sheriff's Color Guard. I would like to welcome the Somerset County surrogate Tina Jallow up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And now Tyler Powell will come up and sing the National Anthem for us.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we walk were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner it wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was amazing. Retire the colors now, please. All right, just a couple more moments of standing and then we can sit. Before I bring up Father Ron, I'd like to note something that not everybody is aware of yet. On Tuesday, we lost a true legend in Somerset County. Marie Chanel of South Bound Brook passed away at the age of 82. She had been the director, executive director of the food bank network of Somerset County for over 38 years. And her passing is indeed going to leave a void in the community. And I would like to call for a moment of silence to honor a woman who I was very proud to call a friend. Thank you. If I could now call up Father Ron Pollock for the invocation.
Almighty and gracious God, we give you thanks for your presence among us when time stands still, when all that has gone before and all that lies ahead is caught up in the midst of this moment. Blessed this time we share together for our reorganization meeting and swearing in, so that what we accomplish today and in the days to come might gladden your heart. For the building up of your people and for the health and well-being of Somerset County and the state of New Jersey, we pray for our governor, Phil Murphy, all mayors of cities, all in administrative authority, members of the U.S. and state senators, assembly, Somerset County Board of Commissioners, for our prosecutor's office, sheriff's office, and all in law enforcement. For those who serve, the various levels of officials and staff, those who serve on our committees, commissions, and agencies, and in particular for all first and community responders who protect and serve us so that we might rest in safety and peace. We pray for the judges and officers of our courts. Give understanding and integrity that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. Teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. Thank you, that you make all things new. Thank you for all those things you've brought into our lives this past year, especially our gratitude for everyday heroes who offer their time, talent, and treasure, help to remind us how much we need one another and to acknowledge our dependence on you alone. In this new year, we ask you to guide our decisions, open doors needing to be opened and close the ones needing to be shut tight. Help us to be known as great givers. Help us to be generous and kind. Help us to look to the needs of others and not be consumed by only our own. May we be lovers of truth and may simple goodness and pure manners be evident in our lives where we make a difference in this world. May we reflect wisdom, patience, and grace. We are truly grateful for those who represent the true spirit of the community in which we work, live, and play, for those who have worked hard to create the foundation on which we currently stand, for those who continue to serve in sacrificial ways, for those who will surely come after us as we prepare for the future. Today, we pause to give thanks for all who exercise effective leadership and genuine friendship. Rest in blessing upon us all and help us to know that there are words of truth and healing that will never be spoken unless we speak them, and deeds of courage, love, and compassion that will never be done unless we do them. Help us to see one another as God's own children, vulnerable and mortal, yet infinitely valuable apart from any social measures of worth. Lead us always into a deeper affection for one another, and may those who walk alongside of us be so transformed by your infinite grace and love. And as we begin to rededicate ourselves to the building up of this beloved community, touched and changed by this occasion, and resume our daily lives, the Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make His face to shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord lift up the light of His countenance on you and give you peace this day and forevermore. Amen.
You may now be seated. It is my honor now to introduce the governor of the state of New Jersey. Phil Murphy took the oath of office for a second term as New Jersey's -- not yet. Took oath for a second term as New Jersey's governor on January 18, 2022. He's the first Democratic governor to serve a second term in 44 years. Governor Murphy currently serves as the Chair of the Democratic Governors Association, and he also completed his year-long chairmanship of the National Governors Association in July of 2023. He's the first governor to have held both organizations, held the leadership in both organizations simultaneously. From 2009 bis 2013, war Minister President Murphy, Botschafter der Vereinigten Staaten in der Bundesrepublik Deutschland. From 2009 to 2013, Governor Murphy served as the United States Ambassador to the Federal Republic of Germany. This is Governor Murphy's seventh visit to Somerset County Reorganization Meeting. In 2018, on this very spot, he swore me in just before he took his own oath of office as governor. His repeat visits show that he truly has a 21-county view of the state. But we believe that he keeps coming back to Somerset County because he likes us best. Please join me in welcoming the governor of the great state of New Jersey, Phil Murphy.
Let's hear it for Steve, the Ryan Seacrest of Somerset County. It is a treat to be back, and I don't know where he went, but your German is, as my mother used to say to me, your German is ausgestattet. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a real treat. Steve said it. I was going to say this is my seventh trip. At least one peg outdoors, I recall, during the height of COVID. But I'm incredibly honored to be back. This is one of the most special chambers, Judge. Thank you for allowing us to be here in all of New Jersey, and I'm absolutely thrilled to be back. Several quick shout-outs. Most importantly, my chair, Peg Schaefer. Peg, thank you for everything. She's not only the chair of this county, but also vice chair of the State Democratic Committee. And Peg took a meeting with me when it was cold, dark, and lonely. She had no reason at all to want to sit with me, and she did. So I'll never forget that. And she's with my nephew, Joel Shane. So Joel, good to see you. What an extraordinary group of elected officials here today. And I won't get all of you, but I will get several outstanding legislators and one outstanding congressperson. Senators Smith, Bramnik, and Zwicker are with us. Assemblyman Fryman, Assemblywoman Carter, Assemblywoman-elect, Michelle Druless is here. It's great to be with all of you. I have the honor of giving the State of the State address next Tuesday, which I'm spending a fair amount of time on, so I'm looking forward to being with you all then. And of course, we have an extraordinary representative, Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, who fights for New Jersey tooth, hammer, and tong, tooth and nail, whatever you want to call it, every single day. On behalf of our interests, it's an honor to have you, Mikey, with us as well. And to each and every one of the judges, members of the clergy, and I think most importantly, the county lineup. And I don't say this as a Democrat. I say this as a Jersey guy and an American. I don't think there's a finer lineup of county officials in the state. I'm going to have the incredible honor to swear in Paul and Doug today, but Chanel, Melanie, Sarah, our dear friends and great leaders. By the way, we have to give a shout out to Colleen Marr, who got elected for her fifth term. Mayor of Vanwood, and she's obviously the county administrator and does a great job. And then the constitutional officers, Darren and Tina and Steve, are as good as it gets. So I'm incredibly honored and humbled to be here. Just another couple of quick words. I've never been happier to be in New Jersey because the world is really, really complicated right now. And you think of what we've come through, Steve, long ago from that first visit here. You think of a pandemic, supply chain, inflation, high interest rates, two wars that are raging and sadly growing and not shrinking, and us versus them culture. It's just one thing after another. You go to the grocery store, the gas station, go to get a mortgage, and it's usually sticker shock. I love so much of what we've done collectively in New Jersey, including on things like rights and freedoms and values. We've increasingly become a -- oh, Joe Danielson, I missed Joe. How the hell could I miss you? I would not have heard the end of that for the rest of my -- never mind my time as governor for the rest of my life. Love you, Joe. I apologize. By the way, Mike Delamater and Rob Field are here with me, so I want to also give them a shout out. And by the way, there's bad weather coming this weekend. Chanel and I have already been back and forth with each other. I say that because Rob Field will be my right-hand man over the course of this weekend. If you need any help, we are here for you. But back to conclude, in a world as complicated as this, why do I say all this? For two reasons. One is thank God we live in Jersey. And even more especially, Somerset County is the quintessential New Jersey county. I was driving up here from Trenton. You pass through Montgomery, Hillsborough, certainly here in Somerville, other communities. It is an extraordinary county, and this is an extraordinary state, and thank God we all live here. That's all I can say. And secondly, in a world as complicated as this, what do you need? You need leaders like this with strong values, conviction, and ability to lead in the face of storms and uneasy environment all around us. And that's another reason why I'm incredibly honored to be here today, certainly for Paul and Doug, but to stand with this extraordinary lineup and say, this is what leadership looks like. God bless you all. I think, Paul, you up next? Up first? Let's hear it for the one and only Paul Drake. I'm not going to deliver Paul's remarks. He's about to say, thank you, Governor Murphy. Go to the center. From the Bible, right hand of the earth. You ready to go? I state your name.
I, Paul Drake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, pal. I love that. Get our good side, please. Excellent. One more? Sorry. Excuse me. Mary, come on back. Excellent.
Thank you, Governor. Thank you, Governor Murphy, once again for coming to Somerset County for our reorganization meeting and for swearing me in. I certainly want to thank my fellow commissioners for their support over the past three years. I also want to specifically support Commissioner Singletary, who's been a great partner and commissioner on this journey, and he's helping me. I look forward to him being sworn in today as well. I also want to thank my wife, Mary, for always supporting these efforts. Her father, long-term borough, Middlesex Borough Mayor, Ron Dobies, was a beacon of integrity and goodness and always put the people first. He carries that commitment, or my wife, Mary, carries that commitment to public service with her every day. My belief in giving back is only strengthened from the lessons I learned from my father-in-law. And we miss him every day, but certainly want to give that tribute to him. I also want to thank the voters of Somerset County for returning me to the Board of County Commissioners. It is awesome trust that you've put in me, and I will spend every day in the next three years working to continue to earn that trust that you deserve. One of the most important topics we have worked on as county commissioners and continue to do so is to do our part to combat global climate change. 2023 was the hottest year in recorded history. We can't afford to break that record again. Climate change is not something that is far away. Right here in Somerset County, we've had the true impact of climate change, both not only from the devastation and loss of life of the past several megastorms in the last 20 years. We've had the impact of higher temperatures on our local farm production, and we've all seen the swarms of insects that have impacted our crops, parks, forests, and our own homes. Last year, we talked about the commissioners' adoption, our commissioners' adoption of the climate change resolution that ensures county decisions are always made with climate change in mind. And over the past year, we've been implementing policies to reduce our carbon footprint and encourage all of you to do the same. One of the best ways to reduce carbon emissions is to preserve natural lands and manage our forests, our open spaces, and farmland. Every farm we preserve is a guarantee, not just of reduced development, but is helping to promote agriculture as a viable industry here in Somerset County. Preserve farms are also an important part of our sustainable land use strategy. County agricultural lands are perfect for regenerative farming practices, providing locally grown food for our markets and for our food banks, and while also preserving the health of our soil and our waterways. This is good for the environment, and it's good for the farmer's bottom line. This year, we held the Influencing Agriculture Conference at Duke Farms to bring Somerset County's agricultural leaders together to discuss their successful strategies for farming in the modern era and to also discuss the economic challenges they face. At the conference, we announced that Somerset County has a preservation pipeline of 35 farms consisting of 2,400 acres that have started the process of preservation. And upon completion, these projects would increase the county's preserved farm acreage to more than 11,000 acres, getting close to our goal of over 16,000 acres of preserved agricultural lands in Somerset County. But let's switch the topics a little bit. Let's talk about healthcare. Another vital topic, which I'm very honored to be part of as the Commissioner of the Human Services Department, is our discussion about the physical and mental health of our communities, and in particular Somerset County's most vulnerable residents. In March, I was thrilled to be part of the Somerset County's Richard Hall Community Wellness Center to cut the ribbon at the Zoo Fall New Health Primary and Dental Care Facility. Zoo Fall now, as a partnership with Somerset County, improves access within Richard Hall to allow clients to not only pair up their mental health, but also their physical health appointments, reducing not only travel time, but also barriers to care. The new Zoo Fall Health Center is not only available to Richard Hall clients, but to the general public. Again, once again, meaning that we have additional option for residents seeking affordable, quality healthcare here, right here in Somerset. We also launched the new Somerset County Helps Mobile Outreach Van to bring services to every community. This van is available to anyone. If you're having a block party, you're having an event, and you want to have some county folks come bring their van, the Somerset County's van will bring information on county programs for veterans, for mental health, for youth and family services, job training, housing substance use recovery, and more. Sometimes all it takes for someone to get to the help they need is knowing that is available and that someone else is taking the time to get access to these programs. But I want to conclude with one of the most exciting announcements we made this year, and it is the expansion of our Community Policing Alliance Program, or CPAC. We launched the CPAC in 2022 by embedding Damian Stackhouse, a county-employed licensed social worker, with the Bridgewater Police Department. This program places a social worker with law enforcement to de-escalate the potential crisis for residents at risk, whether they have issues with mental health, substance abuse, or physical abuse. Damian then follows up with that with the individual households and families to identify the resources and the assistance they need. This program has been such a success that we've now expanded this program to Bound Brook this past summer. We have another half dozen municipalities looking and very interested in our programs and joining up. So I want to conclude that the best thing about being a Somerset County Commissioner is being able to deliver needed support and help for the people of Somerset County. It truly is an honor, and I would say it feels really good to be up here when we get to do good work. So thank you. Thank you for giving me another three years to do the work, and I promise I won't let you down. Thank you.
All right, now we bring the governor back up.
I've been hanging with Elena. Nice to see you. Left on, right up. Ready to go?
Yep.
Ready? I state your name.
I, Doug Singletary.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of county commissioner.
The office of county commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, pal.
All right, thank you, Governor, and it's great to be with all of you here today in this beautiful historic courthouse. I'd like to thank the people of Somerset County for their faith in me and giving me a second term as one of their county commissioners. It is a great honor to have this position and to once again have Governor Murphy here to swear me in. I would like to thank my fellow commissioners as well for the past three years of hard work and cooperation. I've learned a lot from each of them, and I know that together we will continue to deliver for Somerset County. For me, one of the best parts of this job is being liaison to the Vocational and Technical High School and Raritan Valley Community College. These two highly rated schools are truly world-class and provide the kind of quality education that is needed. education that is needed for the next generation of students in industry. I'm proud that the Somerset County Commissioners have made strategic investments to ensure every resident can access education and training opportunities to get the good jobs of the future. The VOTEC is building an expansion that will almost double the number of students, adding capacity for evolving fields such as global logistics, biomedical services, electric vehicles, and more. In the coming decades, this will mean our students will graduate with the knowledge and skills to obtain secure, good-paying jobs in emerging industries we haven't even considered yet. The funding for this project, welcoming students in 2025, came from a partnership of the VOTEC, our state legislatures. Assemblyman Fryman was instrumental in helping with some of that aid, and Governor Murphy's administration to bring together more than $25 million in funding. At RVCC, the county provided $3 million to expand their workforce training, advanced manufacturing, and electric vehicle programs, and launched new training for emergent industries such as packaging and drone maintenance. The expansion would also make RVCC the first community college to have its own clean room, giving our students hands-on, clean-room training employers are looking for in the state of New Jersey. And word of the quality of education available at RVCC is getting out, with enrollment up 10% for the spring 2024 term, at a time when many institutions are seeing falling enrollment. These education investments support the massive growth we are seeing in industries like life sciences, with pharma and biotech companies announcing more than 700,000 square feet of expansion this past year alone, supporting thousands of new jobs. Our employers know that Somerset County, RVCC, and the VOTEC are committed to filling the positions that exist today and preparing Somerset County residents with the skills to fill the positions tomorrow. Our commitment to education and opportunities isn't limited to college and VOTEC. It also extends to ensuring the people of Somerset County are safe and secure in their homes and neighborhoods. This year, in partnership with Somerset County Prosecutor John McDonald, we began offering scholarships to the police academy focused on helping local police forces diversify so they, to ensure they reflect the local community. In return for the county providing the scholarship, residents who may never have considered law enforcement otherwise agree to work in their local police department for at least three years. So far, seven police forces in the county have joined the program. We look forward to even more in the coming years. In addition to law enforcement, Somerset County's Fire Academy has graduated dozens of new firefighters who have volunteered in local departments throughout the county. The COVID pandemic was devastating to local fire departments, with recruitment down, training hard to come by, and high attrition. Somerset County's Office of Emergency Management stepped up to the task to train new and existing firefighters to fill the void, as well as EMTs and community emergency response team members. As a result of these and other programs, all of us in Somerset County can sleep more soundly, knowing great men and women are out there, ready to help at a moment's notice. These are just some of the highlights of my time as your commissioner and a look at what we're planning on doing down the road. I'm proud of each of these efforts, educating our young people and protecting our families, because they fulfill the Board of Commissioners' commitment to ensuring every resident can have a safe, secure life here in Somerset County. So thank you again for entrusting me with this important office. I can't wait to get started again. Thank you.
Before I turn it over for the regular reorganization meeting, the governor stole some of my thunder in announcing some of the dignitaries here, but there are a few others that I should acknowledge. From the judiciary, my friend Rob Wilson and Dahlia Youssef, in addition to Judge Shanahan. I'd like to welcome some of the mayors who are here. Dominic Longo from Bound Brook, Mark Corleano of Far Hills, Nina Singh from Montgomery, Bob Urick from Rocky Hill, Brian Gallagher from Somerville, and Chris Schaffner from South Bound Brook, Lisa Lontai from Warren Township, and of course Peg Schaefer, the Democratic County Chair, the Peg Schaefer. And Tim Howes was rumored to be in the House at some point, but I don't see him right now. And then we also have Robert Presuto of the VOTEC, Michael McDonough of RVCC, Jeff Soriano of the Park Commission, and Chris Edwards from the Business Partnership. And somewhere I spotted the light gleaming from the Executive Director of the New Jersey Association of Counties, who is also here. Did I see him? Did he leave? Did he leave? He left. Oh, all right. But if I didn't mention your name, I should say that you are the most important person in this room. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to the second most important clerk here today, Kelly Major, for the reorganization meeting.
Thank you, Clerk Peter. Good afternoon and welcome to the 2024 Somerset County Board of County Commissioners Reorganization Meeting. We are delighted to once again hold our reorganization meeting in the historic county courthouse, and we're delighted to have so many distinguished guests in attendance with us to mark the occasion. We would like to also welcome the many other guests joining us through the livestream on the Somerset County website. I would like to offer my congratulations to the returning commissioners, Paul Drake and Commissioner Douglas Singletary, and wish the board the best for a successful year ahead. I look forward to working with you all to accomplish the best for our residents in Somerset County in 2024. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey, on January 22, 2023, adequate notice of this meeting was provided as required by law. Additionally, this meeting is being digitally recorded and livestreamed on the Somerset County website. Roll call. Commissioner Drake.
Here.
Commissioner Singletary.
Here.
Commissioner Morano.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Commissioner Robinson.
Here.
Moving on to new business, Resolution 24001 is fixing methods of elections of offices to be filled. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Can I have a second? Roll call. Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson.
Yes.
Resolution 24002 is electing director for 2024. Is there a nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Chanel Robinson.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Roll call. Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson.
Yes.
I state your name.
I, Chanel Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the Office of County Commissioner Director.
Of the Office of County Commissioner Director.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
It is my honor and privilege to nominate Sarah Sui. And I'll second that nomination. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Ready? All right. I, Sarah Sui.
I, Sarah Sui.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Is there a nomination? Is there a nomination?
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
I would like to nominate Melanie Morano. I would like to nominate Melanie Morano.
And this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
I would like to second that. I would like to second that.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of County Commissioner Deputy Director.
Commissioner Drake. Commissioner Drake.
Of the Office of County Commissioner Deputy Director.
Yes. Yes.
According to the best of my ability.
Commissioner Singletary. Commissioner Singletary.
According to the best of my ability.
Yes. Yes.
So help me God.
Commissioner Morano. Commissioner Morano.
So help me God.
Yes. Yes.
Congratulations.
Deputy Director Sui. Deputy Director Sui.
Yes. Yes.
Director Robinson. Director Robinson.
Yes. Yes.
Now we move on to our consent agenda, where we've taken care of business of the county. Is there a motion to approve Resolutions 23-005 through 23-014?
So move.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Move on to 24-016, appointing members to various boards, commissions, and committees for 2024, List B. Votes of office will be administered at these boards, committees, and commissions' first meeting of 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Singletary.
Yes.
Commissioner Morano.
Yes.
Deputy Director Sui.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'd like to also start off by thanking my sister for representing the family, for being here. It's very near and dear to my heart that our family is represented, that we're together. My mom is not feeling well this week, and pop is home taking care of her, but thank you for being, always being there for me and with me, and I appreciate you like you will never know. Little klutzy there, little inside joke. She hit me, but you know, five-year difference, she will never get that opportunity again. Just a sisterly joke. No, but again, thank you for being here. Thank you, Steve Peter, for being our emcee and always supporting us as we continue to report with our reorganization year after year. It is indeed a pleasure because we get to do this as a team, so thank you. This year is a very busy year for our office and the Board of Elections as we go through another presidential primary and general election, and I am so glad that we have you to help ensure us for that smooth transition and election and fair. I also want to congratulate Commissioners Drake and Singletary on their swearing-in for their second term, so way to go. Congratulations. And for the first time, I am joined this board where all five commissioners have been re-elected by voters, and that is a clear indication that our mission to run an efficient, cost-effective, and world-class, and must I say it again, world-class county government for all the people of Somerset County is not just popular, but it has been and will continue to be successful, so thank you to all of you. And thank you to Governor Murphy for joining us again in Somerset County for our reorganization meeting. You have been a phenomenal partner over the years in good times and hard times, and the people of Somerset County are better for it and for us working together. On a very cold day back in January 8, 2021, we led this reorganization meeting outside, as the governor mentioned, on the front steps, very, very cold day, and for the past two years, we were hosted by our friends at RVCC, Raritan Valley Community College, and thank you for your continued support. But today, we are back here in the historic courthouse, and this is where we belong, so we're back home. I am honored to be entrusted once again by my colleagues to serve as director and awed by the responsibility placed on me and my colleagues to deliver for the people of Somerset County. 2023 reflections in our 2024 vision is emerging from the pandemic. We have witnessed big changes in ways people work and how businesses operate. We made strategic investments to support businesses and communities through this transition and position them for growth. In 2023, we hosted statewide Small Business Resource Fair, brought on new tools to help fill vacant properties, and coordinated webinars and walking tours to highlight our downtowns and connect municipal leaders to new state and federal programs. We convened business executives to share best practices on topics like ESG, which became a, which we became a film-ready county and were a critical partner in RVCC's designation as a leading educator for bio-manufacturing. Yeah, that's what's going on. We also welcomed major investment announcements, including cell therapy leader Cellars, creating 400 new jobs right in Bridgewater, right next door, and pet food maker Fresh Pets, which is bringing its corporate headquarters and more than 50 jobs to Bedminster. And there's so much more in the works. This year is a very busy year for our office and the Board of Elections as we go through another presidential primary and general election. And I am so glad that we have you to help ensure us for that smooth transition and election. And fair. I also want to congratulate Commissioners Drake and Singletary on their swearing-in for their second term. So way to go. Congratulations. For the first time, I am joined this board where all five commissioners have been re-elected by voters. And that is a clear indication that our mission to run an efficient, cost-effective, and world-class, and must I say it again? World-class county government for all the people of Somerset County is not just popular, but it has been and will continue to be successful. So thank you to all of you. And thank you to Governor Murphy for joining us again in Somerset County for our reorganization meeting. You have been a phenomenal partner over the years in good times and hard times. And the people of Somerset County are better for it and for us working together. On a very cold day back in January 8th, 2021, we led this reorganization meeting outside, as the governor mentioned, on the front steps, very, very cold day. And for the past two years, we were hosted by our friends at RVCC, Raritan Valley Community College. And thank you for your continued support. But today, we are back here in the historic courthouse. And this is where we belong. So we're back home. I am honored to be entrusted once again by my colleagues to serve as director and awed by the responsibility placed on me and my colleagues to deliver for the people of Somerset County. 2023 reflections in our 2024 vision is emerging from the pandemic. We have witnessed big changes in ways people work and how businesses operate. We made strategic investments to support businesses and communities through this transition and position them for growth. In 2023, we hosted statewide Small Business Resource Fair, brought on new tools to help fill vacant properties, and coordinated webinars and walking tours to highlight our downtowns and connect municipal leaders to new state and federal programs. We convened business executives to share best practices on topics like ESG, which became a, which we became a film-ready county and were a critical partner in RVCC's designation as a leading educator for bio manufacturing. We also welcomed major investment announcements, including cell therapy leader Cellars, creating 400 new jobs right in Bridgewater, right next door, and pet food maker Fresh Pets, which is bringing its corporate headquarters and more than 50 jobs to Bedminster. And there's so much more in the works. Somerset County is already home to a wider range of cutting-edge industries. Our economic development strategy has identified five areas that are going to emphasize, that I'm going to emphasize, or we are going to emphasize, including life sciences, advanced manufacturing, and film. And most importantly, beauty and personal care products and agriculture. You heard from Commissioner Singletary about our investments in RVC and VOTEC. We will be working hand-in-hand with RVCC and our K-12 system and the Somerset County Employers to, employers? I guess it should be employees, excuse me. To, my brain is, employees, to launch a clean room training program. And through our partnership with RVCC, we'll also be focusing on the workforce needs of the film industry through a production assistant program. To further enhance our world-class workforce, we will be introducing a campaign that speaks to people about the many reasons they should consider working for a business right here in Somerset County. We'll continue our work to bring new business opportunities to farmers and healthy local produce to our tables. And we'll become one of the first counties to focus on the ingredients supply chain, which supports businesses ranging from pharmaceuticals to food, from manufacturing to cosmetics. An important part of our economic agenda has been to invest in promoting leisure tourism in Somerset County to compensate for the drop-off in business travel due to the pandemic. That is why we have worked so hard with our legislative partners, particularly Senator Andrew Zwickler and Assemblyman Roy Fryman, to literally put Central Jersey on the map. It was great to have Governor Murphy come to Somerville last summer to sign the bill at the Wallace House, one of our great Revolutionary War sites. With Central Jersey on the map, we are better able to tell the stories of our history, agriculture, outdoor recreation, and arts and culture. We are grateful as well to the New Jersey Tourism Division. Every January, they publish an annual New Jersey Tourism Guide that is distributed throughout the country. Hear me well, that is distributed throughout the country. And this year, that magazine has Central Jersey section that features Central Jersey agritourism on the front cover. Even better, they picked Hidden Spring Lavender and Alpaca Farm in Montgomery Township. So literally and figuratively, we are on the map. And although the official distribution date is next week, I'm thrilled to have the first 100 copies of the guide hot off the presses. So with us today are the owners of Hidden Spring Lavender Farm, Marie and Steve Voorhees. Raise your hands. As you leave, look for your own early copy of the magazine at the doorways. And I also want to thank our tourism office, managed by Somerset County Business Partnership. They have been integral to our efforts. And Commissioner Sui has an update on their great plans for the next few years that will transform our tourism and hospitality efforts. In conclusion, the past three years have been difficult, but we are leading the way to recovery. Businesses are relocating to and expanding in Somerset County, bringing next-generation, good-paying jobs. Young residents have affordable education options so they can thrive in the future economy we are building right here in Somerset County. Our great restaurants, downtowns, and hotels are gaining visitors and business due to our focus on promoting tourism and the film industry. 2023 was a good year for Somerset County, and I look so forward to working with my fellow commissioners, our unparalleled staff, and our partners for an even better 2024. Thank you. Deputy Director?
Thank you, Director Robinson. And I'm so pleased to be back in Somerset County's historic courthouse for our annual reorganization meeting. Thank you to Governor Murphy, all members of our state legislature, local elected officials, our Democratic Chairwoman Peg Schaefer, and to everyone in attendance here today. A special thank you to Congresswoman Cheryl for coming out to Somerset County to swear me in. And the former mayor of Burnersville, who I also call Dad, for holding the Bible. Dad, you taught me what service really was growing up, and it starts right here at home. So from your work in law enforcement, your time at Quantico, and all the work that you did in public office, thank you for guiding me if I could do this work today. Let's also take a moment to congratulate Commissioners Drake and Singletary on their second terms. And once again, to Director Robinson for her reappointment. I'd like to thank you all for your continued trust and support of me as your deputy director. As always, I look forward to working with you all the coming year as we make our collective effort to deliver for the people of Somerset County. I have had the honor of being the liaison to the Somerset County Business Partnership since I first joined the board. And I'm eager to grow our business community in new and exciting ways. We are incredibly proud to welcome Monica Martinez-Milan as the first Latina Chairwoman of the Somerset County Business Partnership. The Business Partnership is a powerful facilitator for successful collaboration between our small, mid, and global businesses as it is committed to inclusion in recognizing all sectors of Somerset County's business community. We've been proud to focus on women in business with our second International Women's Day program and on inclusive business practices with the Diversity Summit. We're also readying our new headquarters in downtown Somerville, featuring the Somerset Business Hub, a new training space providing educational programs for businesses throughout the county. Being that the Business Partnership also serves as the county's tourism office, there's a wide range of innovative programs to help grow the vital sectors. We've expanded the reach of our Somerset County's Destination Guide to half the United States, with new distribution in 2023 to the Midwest and the entire I-95 corridor. Preparations are underway for 2026 with both the FIFA World Cup and our nation's 250th anniversary celebrations. For the World Cup, one of the Business Partnership's member hotels is sold out more than two years ahead. And we anticipate hosting one of the team's training camps. Somerset County is home to brilliant historic sites, scenic locations, but the one closest to my heart will always be the stables at Lord Sterling Park. And some of you may know, I grew up in Burnersville, walking distance from Lord Sterling Stables. My younger sister and I spent much of our childhood riding and taking lessons. When I joined the Board of County Commissioners, the park commission was struggling to maintain the operations of the stable due to financial concerns. But the county park commissioner, leadership, commitment from the volunteers and professionals, partnered together to develop plans for a future for Lord Sterling Park. When we are done expanding the trails, there will be 10 miles dedicated solely to equestrian rides and an additional three miles of trails for both horses and pedestrians connecting the historic homes, local neighborhoods, and state parkland. And just a few weeks ago, my colleagues and I approved a plan to move forward with a new horse barn to replace the dairy barn that we've been using for decades. The expanded, upgraded, and refurbished stable, trails, and historical sites at Lord Sterling Park are just one of the draws for visitors to come to Somerset County for tourism. Somerset County is already recognized as one of the best counties in New Jersey. And with the efforts of my colleagues and partners, the Business Partnership, Park Commission, and many others will work to spread the word to the whole country. So we have much to look forward to in 2024 and in the years to come. Thank you to everyone here today for joining us at our annual reorganization meeting. And thank you once again to my fellow commissioners for entrusting me with the deputy directorship for another year.
Thank you, Deputy Director Sui, and all my fellow commissioners. Again, congratulations to my friends Paul and Doug. I'm so happy to have you back here. And as many have said already, this is truly, genuinely an honor to serve the people of Somerset County by serving on this board. And I mean that genuinely. And I can also genuinely say thank you to all of our staff that make this happen. So for those of you. Those of you watching on the live screen, the live stream, rather, that are back at the administration building, thank you, guys, for everything you do. I am the liaison to the Public Works Division. A special thank you for all of them. Every time you come to a Somerset County event, they're the people that have been behind the scenes, getting it ready for you, making it good for you, and cleaning up after you. So I love my Public Works people, and they're going to be busy this weekend with possible snow. So Vinny, make sure they're all ready to go. We're ready. He's ready. I want to talk to you all about something that the other commissioners have talked about and touched on. The 250th anniversary of our nation. That's coming up in 2026. And we, on this county Board of Commissioners, have been making great strides in advance, so we're ready. The director spoke about economic development, and I'd like to expand on the one part of our effort to recover from that COVID era. Over the past few years, it's become clear that commercial real estate is under pressure, office buildings, et cetera. And so the hospitality industry that relies on business travel has suffered as well. That's why we're focusing, when we talk about this, on leisure tourism. With the Somerset County Business Partner, and thank you for being here, Chris Edwards, if you want to stand up and say hello. He's our leader for the Business Partnership. We're continuing our sip-and-see program. If you don't have plans for the weekend and you haven't done sip-and-see yet, Congresswoman, you can still stop and sip a little bit before you go. We're going to continue that program to promote craft beverages, farms, and historic sites. We are also launching the Film Commission. And this past fall, we've hosted a tour of the county for film-location scouts in partnership with the State Motion Picture and Television Commission. But perhaps our biggest opportunity will be with the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence in 2026. I've been involved with our preparations as liaison to the Cultural and Heritage Commission. And thank you again to our Cultural and Heritage Commission and all the volunteers of every volunteer board this county has. A special thank you to you all as well. Going back to my script, I'm jumping off page here. There's going to be a major push nationally to celebrate the anniversary. And we've prepared a five-point plan to ensure that the world knows Somerset County and our rich history related to the Revolutionary War and the founding of our great nation. Most of us know that my hometown of Greenbrook has the Washington Rock Park. It's a watch on mountain perch where General Washington spied on the British and the Hessian soldiers in New Brunswick. But recently, we acquired another lookout that Washington used. Some of the folks colloquially call it "The Eagle's Nest", and it's right in Bridgewater. It was the final hole in the doughnut for our Washington Valley Park. The first point of our 250th plan is to combine that new property into the Washington Valley Park in Bridgewater, creating new access roads to get to that park and a new interpretive plan to highlight the two Middlebrook encampments, which took place in 1777, and the other in 1778, 1779. As part of that encampment, I don't know if you all know this, the Stars and Stripes flag was first flown here in Somerset County. So a lot to be proud of here. So that's point one. Let's go to second point, touching on what the deputy director had talked about. The second point is an archaeological dig at the Lord Sterling Park's manor house and the restoration of the Budino Southern Mansion that's there. Lord Sterling was one of the five generals who led the Middlebrook encampment for the Continental Army and borrowed local homes known as the Five Generals Homes. And Mayor Schochner, you have one of those homes in your hometown of Southbound Brook during their stay. All five of those homes are standing and regularly open to the public through efforts of our local nonprofit partners. The third part of the plan, and perhaps a really exciting one, we're under contract to purchase a portion of the Battle of Bound Brook battlefield with Middlesex County. That's clap-worthy, people. So for those of you who don't understand why that's clap-worthy, A, we're partnering with another great county and sharing those costs for that, so it's economically viable. But this site includes what may be the oldest, still-standing, stone arch bridge in the whole country. We plan to make major progress restoring it there for the 250th. So I have lots more I could talk about that, but I know you all, you know, looking at me, how many pages? I got a big-sized box. Let's go to Plan Four. Fourth part, we're partnering with local cultural and historic nonprofits in the state of New Jersey to develop an interpretive plan that tells the story of Somerset County during the Revolution. This involves signage at historic sites, developing maps and routes to find the sites, and marketing materials and events to encourage people outside of Somerset to come here for a visit. And finally, Point Five is the recruiting and training of volunteer docents who can guide our visitors through the Revolutionary War historic sites and educate them about Somerset County's history. Many of these sites are operated by nonprofits with small budgets, so they are not open as regularly as we would like them to be. So our new volunteer docent program will provide this much-needed help. We have great stories to tell here in Somerset County. And we're going to spend the next few years telling them even better. This will help us take advantage of increasing heritage tourism and thereby support our restaurants, our hotels, our downtowns, our farms, our businesses, our downtowns. Right, Mayor Gallover? We'll get him in there, too. And other small businesses that rely on tourism. So in conclusion, this courtroom you're sitting right now, historic site. 101 years ago, it was the scene of the historic Paul Mills Trial of the Century, as it was called then. So here we are again in a historic place, in a historic county, with a historic Board of County Commissioners for you, working to do things that preserve our history and make history in the process. I thank you all for being here, and I thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve.
That's what makes us great. Thank you all. We are now opening up the meeting to the public for public comment. Five minutes, no yielding of time, or three minutes, no yielding of time. They're coming back a second time. I was drawing nine. So is there a motion to open to public?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Hearing, seeing none, is there a motion to close to public?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Before we move on to the benediction, I'm going to bring, it's Reverend Monsignor Joseph Solano, Church of Immaculate, to conception, to provide us with the benediction. I would be remiss if I did not thank our own Assemblywoman, Wonder Woman Linda Carter, for swearing me in. And I saw that my pop came in, so I guess Mom is doing a little better. Thank you to my pop, Reverend Dr. W. F. Oden.
Thank you to my pop, Reverend Dr. W. Golda.
So let us pray. Oh God, you have created and you govern all things in wisdom and love. And so accept the prayers we offer today for our nation, for our state and county, and for those present among us who are called upon to exercise authority in that spirit of service to which you call each of us. In your goodness, guide, inspire, and protect those in authority so that our county and the many communities we represent may enjoy your gifts of freedom, security, justice, peace. So may the Lord bless you and keep you. May he make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May God turn his face toward you and always give you peace. Amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. God bless Somerset County. God bless the state of New Jersey. God bless America. Thank you. Be well.